Okay, the public hearing today was postponed possibly or canceled to a later date. So there will not be a public hearing on Thursday. I'm very sorry. So we have called the meeting to order and if you will please stand where you pray. Let's pray. Dear Grace, it's heaven and father, we thank for this day and all the many lessons that we've been given and for allowing us to come together and support and promote, we pray that we do everything in accordance by our word. We pray for the country, especially the men who deserve it and especially the ones who want to serve, if you'll bring them back home safe and sound, we believe that will bring them back to natural healing. We ask you to forgive us of our sins, cross and pray, amen.
I plead with the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock Hall, Mr. Phillips.
Alderman Clef.
Present.
Alderman Cowan.
Present.
Alderman Dale.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Present.
Alderman Langford.
Present.
Alderman Speck. Everybody present but Alderman Speck.
Everyone's present but Alderman Speck. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Approved the minutes of last month's meeting.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Alderman Dale, is it second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clef. Discussion, all four of them, most likely, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed. Uh, next item is additions or deletions to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple additional questions.
Okay.
One, I would like to add, request to add, that the public be given time, here on our agenda, to make comments, should they choose. The second item I would like to add is discussion of a referendum to allow the public input on term limits for city government. The third item is discussion of agenda policies, and I have some discussions from your testimony.
What's the last name?
Agenda policy, and we said as agenda, let's add.
Okay, there's a motion by Alderman Coleman, is it second?
Second.
Second of Alderman Clef, in discussion.
I'll go with all three of these at once.
I was going to, actually, I did, all three of these at once, yes, a motion and second, in discussion. Rock Hall, Mr. Phillips.
Alderman Clef.
Yes.
Alderman Cowan.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Yes.
Alderman Langford.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, number six, uh, the public, certainly we don't have a right to speak, and we have got a large crowd here, and what I'm gonna do is just simply pass this around, and everyone that would like to speak, please sign it, okay? You'll be given two minutes to speak, and we will go from there, okay? And I will, Arnold, you're already on the agenda, so you don't have to sign it. I will start handing this out, but, okay, could you go on? Anybody, there's some heat cans over here. Okay, there is room over here to stand, if anybody would like to come over or not, that's completely up to you. All right. Item number one, new business, home rent policy, change resolution, this is Amanda Mayer for Grassroots Planning Consulting, what's your name?
Hello, hello. How are y'all tonight? I believe Mayor, oh, push the button, yes, there we go, now can you hear me?
Yes.
I believe Mayor Hayes and Ms. Phillips has included an award letter in your packet tonight, but first of all, I need to say congratulations, we actually received funds in about a $500,000 for our home rent this year, so we had the policies and procedures to review and pass tonight, and then we plan this month to be discussing, holding a public hearing to take applications and things of that nature. These policies and procedures, of course, they, they're set by THDA, and they just outline the guidelines that we move forward and use to pursue the home grant.
Okay, so this resolution for adopt a formal policy and procedures for the THDA home project, whereas the mayor and board of aldermen believe that all citizens in the town will be issued out, safe, decent, and affordable housing, whereas the board believes it is important to serve the elderly, disabled, and migratory population of the town lives who are low, moderate, and down the need to save, sanitary, and affordable housing, and whereas the formal standardized set of policy procedures that are developed for all THDA home housing, real construction projects, whereas town lives who are all residents, recognize the need for consistency in all operations applied by the set of policy and procedures, be further resolved, the town lives who are all residents, full faith, in support of the adoption of the same policy, and procedures in all THDA home housing, real, and reconstruction projects. Okay.
Is there anything in the policies that y'all would like for me to review, do you have any questions on that? Of course, this is eligible, um, citizens, there's different criteria that must be met in order for them to receive assistance, but technically, we are eligible to do rehabilitation, reconstruction, and that would mean demolishing the existing home and replacing it with a new home, or replacing manufacturer homes as well.
Right, well first I want to say job well done.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
This is gonna be exciting.
It's been, the last project I remember you getting funded through the home rate was 2010.
Right.
So that's, that's been 12 years ago.
Right. Okay.
I have one quick question, congratulations again, once these applications are submitted for review, about how long do you anticipate funds being distributed?
I would like, the sooner the better, in my opinion, and I feel like you would think that as well, of course, it takes some time, we have to do an environmental review, we do one on Friday, and then we have to individualize each house, so I would think, let's say, October, October at least, let's say that, because you never know with government funding.
Thank you, thank you.
You don't.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Alderman Langford, is her second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson, any discussion? All four of them motion, let them both say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion passed.
Thank you.
You want me to sign this now, or you want to just wait?
You can hang that light later.
Mr. Mayor, point of privilege?
Yes.
I think the placards of a personal, to some people offensive nature are inappropriate in this venue, it should be removed.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment on that.
Pardon?
I respect Governor Clef's views on this, I believe it might be important to ask our city attorney to advise us on that.
Excuse me, because I was looking at the design sheet here, so.
Okay, Jill, if you would come to the podium, please, Alderman Clef, two of your own question.
Mr. Mayor, it wasn't a question, it was a point of privilege.
Okay.
I think the placards that, that could be offensive to some are inappropriate to the setting of this venue, I would ask that you remove it.
Counting against discrimination, not claiming any pre-civil rights laws, if you think before you add.
I don't know that you can do that. Right. All right. Item number two, Mr. Arnold Proctor.
Thank you for putting me on, Mayor and Alderman.
Yes, sir.
Can you get the microphone?
It's Alderman, I'll move it over.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, Mr. Proctor, let me tell you what I'm gonna do, since, according to what I have been held here, did everyone sign this that wanted to speak? You, you won't, okay.
Can you sign that with a "a" because how do you know you want to speak until you hear what they're speaking?
Mm, I do.
So I'll put my name on there with a "a".
Okay, well, we're.
I put Sharon Paul.
I want to speak.
I'll write you that.
I want to speak, my name is Liz Judy.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, everyone will have three minutes to speak, we'll start with Mr. Proctor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm on three minutes.
Everybody's gonna get three minutes.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
My recommendation, and I don't want anyone to miss this motion, I would like to see this moved through the agenda as is planned, and then add what's coming in.
Okay, well, Mr. Proctor's on the agenda, right, item number two, you want to move into the?
No, but I believe you said that the Proctor is the first one.
Yeah.
Implying that the remainder of the public would then go back.
That's not, that's not.
So can we clarify that?
Yeah, no, the, as we added on the agenda, number six, uh, that is word of the public to speak, Mr. Proctor asked specifically to be on the agenda, and he was placed on the agenda. Yes, sir, take it away.
Thank you.
Three minutes, Ken, start the call.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, Ken, you got three minutes to start the call.
Shouldn't you bow down like, let's bow down like.
This is very unusual, nobody else has ever been told this when they come to a speech.
We want to bow down like.
We're gonna have order.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
We're gonna have order.
Sorry.
Right, we're gonna have order, I know that folks are passionate here on both sides.
I know, sorry.
So we're not gonna be speaking out.
Sorry.
Now, normally, according to our attorney, that there's an allotted time for folks to speak, tonight, the allotted time is three minutes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't understand, I'm sorry.
Okay, and, and I'm giving everybody an opportunity to sign up and speak, okay? All right, Mr. Proctor.
Curtis, I am not leaving this. First thing I want to say, though, the city workers, the fire department, the police officers, thanks for all the long hours and all you did when the storm came through. Also, for Crumblin' Electric, Twin Lakes, they were out there on the job getting everybody's stuff, we had neighbors effing neighbors, it was good to see the community come together and do so much. I had more in here, but I got three minutes, so I'll skip to the bad part. But I did want to state some of my qualifications to talk about management, I got a BDA at University Memphis, a master of science degree at the University of Arkansas, with a major in operations management, I have been an executive in various companies, I mean an executive, not just a manager, for 30 years. I did want to say, this is part of something else, but I do not think Greg Etheridge took the money, it was just loose oversight, and probably piddled out a little at a time over the years, so somebody got really greedy, took enough that it was noticed. I'm gonna list some areas that I think we need to look at, the council and the mayor and the city attorney. Number one, the mayor and Alderman were not overseeing the police department, if they had, Greg probably would not have had to resign. Alderman and mayor not recusing themselves for voting on a friend when it came up about Greg, you can't argue with the man and be fair in a judgment of him. And mayor, I don't know how you still mayor, you double tip on expenses, it was in the paper, and the reason is because the only way anyone sitting up front can be removed is everyone sitting up front vote them out. There is no recall allowed for us because it's in the city charter that they're Alderman and mayor police themselves. Long time ago, in 2020, our house burned, July the 4th weekend. Most of the people, by the way, we had a volunteer fire department, not, we had one fireman on duty at the time, the fireman comes, everybody's at the lake, myself and our neighbor and my mother-in-law and father-in-law are trying to put out the fire. Finally, some of the reserve, our volunteers got called in, and they were, they did a good job at that point, but a lot of our house burned, in fact, it was destroyed.
Arnold, your time is up, three minutes is up. Thank you.
Now, get on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item number three, fireworks, Alderman Coleman.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to request that that be tabled, please.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Coleman to table, item number three, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Dotson, in discussion, all four of them motion, let them both say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion passed. Okay, item number four is the LPD, interim chief Ray Smith, is Ray, you gonna give him a progress report?
Yes, sir, and thankful for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Livingston City Police Department of the Council, Board, and Mayor. We have made steps toward fixing some of the solutions, and coming up with solutions with the DA, Mr. Dunaway was contacted by myself, and he has asked, and I asked him to join me in the fixing of our, the deeds we have with the police department, and Mr. Dunaway has ensured me that Asia will be joining me this week to oversee and take care of and get things back in order, uh, under policies and procedures that's already been set in place by M-TAS and the Livingston City Police Department this time. Uh, we are looking to move forward, we do have a lot of things ahead of us, but we do have experienced men and women that can take up these tasks and take care of whatever they may be, and for a person though, I'm proud of the Livingston Police Department, I've served since 1998, and I just thankful for the opportunity to be a part of them setting back the street. Yes, sir.
Thank you, okay, okay, does anybody have any questions for?
I have a question, too. What is your estimate on how long can that, interim, take?
The DA said we're gonna move through very thoroughly and slowly, I asked him to give me a time, and he said he would not lock his step down into a time, he expects it to be a long-term thing, but he wants me thorough about it, that we can come back to a report to the board and mayor, and to the city itself, and say, this is what we found, this is what we done, and the situation been took care of.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, some questions?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, interim chief Smith. I realize that few more than anyone in this room recognize that you have a very tough job ahead.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind repeating for me again, about how long have you been at the police department?
Since 1998.
All right, and in those years, have you ever experienced anything like the last two that have been in terms of the stress on yourself, your family, your coworkers? Have you ever experienced anything quite distressing?
No, sir.
Do you believe that it's taken an emotional toll on the remainder of the staff that we actually have left?
Yes, sir, it even bother, this room has got folks in the United States taking a great emotional toll.
All right, thank you, and I have another question for you. In the last meeting, it was announced that an employee, a current employee, apparently, was found in the comptroller's report to have, quote, borrowed cash, borrowed evidence cash. In your opinion, has that matter been resolved to your satisfaction?
No, sir.
Why not?
I think it needs to be clarified, what we mean by borrowing.
All right, thank you, so with that in mind, I have a question for our city attorney, John Meadows, please. Mr. Meadows, is it possible for you to seek further clarification from the comptroller and the DA on, quote, both the evidence custodian and former captain have stated that they had borrowed undeposited seeds, cash for personal purchases, and would later pay it back, end of quote? In my opinion, this must be dealt with immediately, the other employees at the department must present that nothing other than supposedly, quote, reassigning someone is the only action that they received. The entire mess has to be resolved, not just part of it, it's determined that this occurred per the comptroller, then termination is justified according to policy. My question is, is it possible to go back to the DA and to the comptroller and seek further clarification and details on the borrowing of cash for the evidence?
Well, I think with respect for the comptroller's office, I don't think the comptroller's is going, is going to discuss anything behind what's in their original report, I think that's what they disclosed to us at the exit interview, okay? Now, I think in the comptroller's report, I don't think they specifically identified exactly which, who, they didn't identify them by name, I don't think in the comptroller's report, however, it's my understanding that, that the employee that you're referencing, it's my understanding that that employee was, was maybe initiating some process for the comptroller's office to clarify that for themselves, I think there was also, um...
Excuse me, excuse me, just one second.
Yes, sir.
Did you repeat that? I'm not aware of that, do you mind?
Yeah, it's my understanding that that particular employee had an issue with what was in the comptroller's report, and was taking it up with the comptroller, okay? And other information provided by the district attorney was, I had questioned him about that before, and, and I think the information that was provided to me was that particular employee had, in the records that they had revealed during their investigation, revealed that that employee had documented things that looked like they was trying to make an effort to, to, I guess, document these things about the money that was taken out by another employee, but I think there was some discrepancy between exactly what the comptroller reported and what the TBI might have found in relation to that.
Okay, great.
If that answers your question, but I can get with General Dunaway and try to get some more specific clarification on that issue.
I would appreciate that, I think that it would be very helpful, really, to dispel some concerns that not only I have myself, but certain other people do as well. I, I believe that this employee deserves full due process to either clear their name or let the DA or the comptroller prove their comments that were stated in the report. I'm not asking this body to take action other than you're requesting if further details can be found, because according to the policy, if you dip your hand into the evidence, that's grounds for immediate termination, and I think that needs to be flushed out completely, I'm not stating that this employee is guilty, I quoted what the report says, so I think we need additional investigation into that, and I think this board needs to consider further action on that, in that respect, on that issue.
Do you have questions for me?
I don't have any questions, I have, I do have some additional comments, not on that particular subject, but. Kelly, could you restate the last part of what you said, you feel that we need to, I mean, before you said flush that out, but then you said I think we should take further action. Let me, let me clarify, I believe I said, no, this is what I intended to say, I'm not asking this body to take any action tonight, my request would be that the city attorney help us to flush it out, let's find out really what happened, other than just a simple quote in the report, and we get more details, and then if further action is needed, that may be the discussion that this body needs to have at a later time, but I think it needs to be resolved, there doesn't need to be any suspicion, I mean, did this happen or it didn't happen, and we need proof. Is that clear? Okay. Okay, so, everybody here knows I have a lot of opinions, I talk a lot, I've dominated this much and all that, and I apologize for that, but I have a job to do. The citizens of this town elected me, and they put their faith in me, and I swore to another, and my oath says that I shall... I'm not looking for kiddos, so, please, I shall faithfully and honestly and impartially fulfill my duties. This has been very difficult. I really like Greg Etheridge, there's, you won't find a much finer person, his mother's always been a great friend of mine, and I adore her, this hurts them, it's hard for us, small towns make it even harder when friendships are involved, so this is no fun, okay? By far, it's the most challenging issue that's come before this board in my tenure, but I have to be honest, and in being honest, I have to share my views. So, pardon me, but these are my views, these are my opinions, based on my thorough review of the facts, the circumstances, the conversations that I've had. And all things considered with this mess. I would like to begin by stating the obvious. This entire issue involving our city police department is an unfortunate situation that has resulted in reputations being harmed, friendships being damaged, families of our entire workforce being subjected to community harassment. If you don't believe me, ask them. Great and long-term employees of the department have departed the force, and ultimately, our community is left asking questions about why? Why did this happen? Why wasn't this dealt with years ago? Why? Are there people still here that may have admitted to wrongdoing? Frankly, in my opinion, this is an embarrassment. It's a black eye on how we manage our town, and this must never be allowed to happen again. In my opinion, we all at this table share blame. We are held to account by the citizens with their, your trust to see that not only the police department, but all areas of our city government are being held to the highest standards of integrity and professionalism. That is our job. We are here because of a total lack of oversight, attention to detail, and a lack of proper supervision and accountability. And not only by Mr. Edrich, but by the mayor, as well as ourselves, the elected aldermen. I accept my responsibility for my portion of the lack of oversight, and I offer my apology to this community for not doing a better job. Our city operates on policies and procedures that must be adhered to. There are no valid excuses for wavering so far off the track in this circumstance. This missing money has been known about for years and been willfully kept quiet in hopes that it would just get resolved. That, in my opinion, is unacceptable. And the consequences of that inaction leaves us in this unfortunate mess. We must do better. Leaders must lead with integrity, follow the code of conduct, and abide by the laws of Tennessee. Now, we have a low morale among those remaining at the police department and have experienced departures from some, from some of our most senior forces. We have a lot of work to be done. I know that Ray is a man of integrity and will do his absolute best to work within the policies to get this train back on the tracks.
Yes, sir.
I'm very pleased to learn today that the DA's office is back and willing to assist Ray in every way possible to clean out the mess. And I do have a few recommendations, and I'll share those when I finish my statement. I do feel a complete fairness to Mr. Edrich. I know that he is, and I have discapitalized him on this, a good man. I do not believe that he took the money. Ray has a huge heart and one that I believe is dedicated to serving other people. Ray has brought a passion to help people into his job every day. I've heard countless stories of the many ways that he's helped families in need in this community. I know he's caring, I know he is generous, but he may be generous almost to a fault. I know that he's gone above and beyond many, many, many times to help people in need, families in desperate situations, and strangers he's never met before. I would like to personally thank Ray Edrich for his years of service to our town. He...
Just one time.
He deserves full credit for the many wonderful ways that he has had a positive impact on our town and all of us. His gifts of service are a natural part of Ray's strengths, in my opinion. I wish Ray and his lovely family nothing but the best. They deserve our full support. I can't imagine what they're going through tonight. We're all human, and we sometimes miss the mark. But at the end of the day, I know that Ray is someone who probably has a lot of regret about some of the errors that he may have made. I ask, let's support him, let's be grateful that his decision was made and what he described is the best interest of our community. And he loves this community. Sadly, as I said before, I honestly believe that this boils down to a lack of oversight and that his lost focus on the day-to-day basics of running a tight ship. This was something that began under his watch, yet was allowed to fester like an evil cancer and has snowballed until now we have a serious problem. Again, in defense of Mr. Edrich, in my heart, I do not believe Ray took money, any money. There's blame to be shared, and I believe, as I said earlier, that there's enough blame to go around. As I said, the mayor, the mayor and the board of Alderman have shared responsibilities. According to multiple reports from both employees, current and former, the discovery of the missing evidence cash, which was allegedly, in the DA's letter, he said allegedly seized, it's allegedly seized because there are no documents receiving this cash. Okay? Wrap your mind around that. He states in his letter that it is allegedly seized. The discovery of the missing evidence was reported up to chain command, I understand, years ago. And the meaning of notifications of the comptroller and the DA should have occurred and not waited up to two years. This information was reportedly known to the chief, the captain, the evidence clerk, and the mayor as far back as early as maybe late eighteen, early nineteen. The former chief was enabled, enabled to procrastinate. Oh, and what I described was an effort, an corrective to go find the problem, when in fact the problem of discovered tampered evidence is required by policy to be reported immediately to the state of Tennessee. We Alderman were not notified of this issue until early 2021. Mr. Edrich and to each of us individually had told us what, what was going on. Our attorney immediately asked us each to contact the comptroller's office to inform them of this issue. And we did. To, to the best of my knowledge, the chief was never held accountable to submit the required, these are according to policy, evidence room inspection reports. It's in the policy. You must do an annual inspection of the evidence room, and it must be submitted to the mayor within five business days, verbatim policy. In addition, there is also a requirement for an informal inspection to be done once a year by someone who has no other evidence room responsibilities, but who works within the department. This is very independent, of course. I do not believe there are any records of such inspections. I requested copies, never received them. The chief of police has a direct supervisor, that's the mayor. And we, as a board, are responsible for ensuring compliance, and checks and balances are being enforced. I believe that if, what, I believe that's what we elected to do, and we failed. The former chief was given too much freedom and not enough accountability. Fraternizing, socializing, and allowing close personal friendships between boss and subordinate always is a recipe for problems, because inevitably, the sailing's not always going to be smooth, and bosses have to manage. But when there's close connections, friendships, and your buddies, you can't leave, makes it almost impossible. In our government, the relationship between a city hall and the supervisors must be professional first and personal second. It'll never work unless you keep your close relationships separate. Proper boundaries between personal and professional is a must for a good leader. I'm angry. I'm disappointed that the proper steps weren't followed at all levels of the chain command, because I believe we must certainly would not be sitting here talking about this tonight. It would have been dealt with and resolved long ago. It now may take us years to regain your trust, and I regret that. In any organization, the man at the top must bear the responsibility. It's been said countless times, maybe, well, Ray put too much trust into people. The man at the top bears responsibility. Okay? The buck stops there. No doubt that Mr. Edrich should have accepted responsibility, but it's official. He was charged with full responsibility for his romantic violence. Not a single one of us at this table created this mess. But I believe, again, that the lack of supervision and oversight is why we're here today. Last, I want to say that I personally have great respect for the many who have shown tremendous courage to stand up to power and try to do the right thing, and I'm referring to a few good couples. They have waited patiently for a year and a half to see us resolve this problem. And when they felt, following June sixth, that their voices hadn't been heard, the frustration began to boil over, leading to five resignations of senior officers, including multiple sergeants. We owe them our respect and should thank them for their perseverance. It's my understanding that we're making progress on retiring some of those employees, which would be, in my opinion, great. I know that these officers who have resigned made personal calls, they wrote letters, and they came to visit all of us, most of us on this table, all in an effort just to be heard. The good old boy system of who you are, who your friends are, with, or what your last name might be, in our city government must end, full stop. Our citizens, you, I know, I've heard from you, are sick and tired and want to see the change. Nothing erodes morale and mistrust of employees faster than when they witness favors for friends and people being treated special based on who you are or what you can do for them. It's sickening and it's deplorable. We are better than this living state. Treat each person fairly regardless. I have faith in our new interim chief, Mr. Ray Smith, that you can do this, that you will do this. I'm asking you, citizens, for your continued patience. As Mr. Smith works through establishing himself as the leader in charge and resolving some years-long problems, he needs all our support. Please encourage Ray and be certain to thank our officers who have put themselves on the line every day to protect us. Pray for them and encourage them. They needed, they deserved. Thank you.
Item number five is donated lights to the Brooklyn Recreational League. We was donating some lights to a little contractor from the high school, and we are not going to be able to use them. This recreational league has got room for lights, so they could serve us now. I'm just glad we donated, it cost us a few bucks.
Motion to donate.
Motion to donate by Calum and Rick Dale.
Senator.
Senator, all four of them, say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. All right, we're at the segment where the public can speak. First is Mr. Hugh Roberts.
I need somebody else getting up there. Who will help me? Okay, get that. And I need a microphone that's loud. Because I'm at the dentist. Can you help me stand up here and help me? He used to be my room, so I'm still calling him. First of all, if I've ever been your teacher, I want you to stand up. Yes, you too. Curtis, stand up. I was your teacher. If I've ever been Wayne, yes. No, not what you're a teacher, I taught your wife and student teacher, and I got it mixed up. Anybody else in here in my room? I just want to say, I've been at the dentist, and I know y'all are proud because I taught more. At one time, my close cousin was governor, A.H. Roberts of the greatest state of Tennessee, and it is the greatest state in America. And we live... You can clap if you want to. Can they clap now? Okay, I'm sorry. We live in the greatest country in the whole world. Nobody can question that. I fell up here when the sidewalks was being done, and that's why I'm so pitiful and crippled, because I tripped when they was making the new sidewalks. And I'm not saying it was the city's fault, I'm just saying I have to pay a housekeeper because I can't do it. Okay? Things like this. And I asked the mayor, could you at least buy me a pair of glasses? I broke my glasses, and I have to have $400 glasses. He never did get back with me. If I had my time to do over, I could have sued, but I didn't because I love our city. All right, years ago, I've been teaching forty years, and I'm not old. I just told you I'm a... All right, years ago, I've been teaching 40 years, and I'm not old. I just told you I'm aging. The pilgrims, I taught 40 years of kids about our great country. And if you ever had me for a teacher, Kelly Cullen, you know I did. Then I said the pilgrims came where we could be freed. Freedom of speech. You know, we came because this is the greatest country in the world because God's in charge. And if God ever goes away, we won't be. And anybody listening could sue me. I believe in God and I'd rather be sued for that than anything. Okay, and I've got one more point. We came to this country because we were overtaxed. And you know, this bunch of pitiful, I tell my kids, this bunch of pitiful people got on a boat and they sent convicts because they didn't want them. You know, but we came and we're the greatest. My cousin be proud of me if it was governor. Okay, our town, and I'm saying the police department, and my husband's a police department, and he'll shoot me for talking, joking, has two sets of rules. If a rich person gets drunk and falls down, that's one rule. If a poor person gets drunk, that's another rule. I always taught my kids, we were the first and the best country anywhere, and I still believe that. Caroline, you call me Miss Judy, I don't like it when you don't call me Miss Judy.
Miss Judy.
It's my time up.
Your time.
Okay, I apologize if my time is up, but I love Livingston and I wish I'd sued. I had to have help cleaning my house, everything. But I didn't because I love that man up there, Curtis. You're the only reason I didn't. And I'm really poor. Thank you all.
Can somebody get this?
Would somebody help me out?
Not earth and grass.
I'm shaking.
Yeah, you shaking.
I'm a little dazed and you may have to help me. I used to help this daddy in church, I guess he helped me.
There, dude, just right here.
I'm shaking too much. It'll take some people to help me sit up.
David, you take her hand.
I'm shaking, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right.
I'm just, I've been.
All right, come on down.
I've been at the dentist and I don't feel good.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Miss Judy.
Ms. Hugh Smith, sorry.
I'm sorry, I go for Miss Judy.
Okay.
Yes, I do, thank you. Thank you.
So, next week, how Jamie Melton?
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. Let me say, I just feel like, okay, Kelly Cullen just made this face that he just done. If that would have been addressed last month, a lot of this, the questions the citizens had had and the questions that we, we was, the citizens was left just feeling like, what just happened? He gave us some transparency, he gave us some insight, and it's you guys that have to lead this community for us. And I know it can be better and it will be better, and I hope and pray this would be lesson for everyone and that we go forward with this. All we want is honesty. The citizens want honesty. We want transparency. We want us to listen. That's a really funny aside, but thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Melton. Ron Lane?
My name is Ron Lane. I'm a city resident. Counselor, am I allowed to ask my representatives a question or just a comment?
I think the chairman has the discretion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Just comments, thank you.
Just commented, then my topic is industrial classifications in the city. I'm wondering if this, this move towards getting industrial zoning closer into town is a good one. Do we have, I can't ask the question, I would encourage the board to think about whether or not we can obtain more industrial ground dirt somewhere else so that industrial stuff can happen outside rather than that which would be closer in. We understand commercial, we want commercial, we like growth, it's a good thing. But in my mind, there's a significant difference between commercial and industrial, even light industrial. Therefore, I'm asking that you guys take a look at whether or not we have any, and if we do, make that available. If we don't, is there someplace we can obtain more dirt? That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
I'd like to interject something. I did mention when I shared my views that I have suggestions. I'd just like to make one more point I made. Ms. Phyllis helped me recently do an analysis of our employee turnover within the police department. And during my term as Alderman, which I'm concluding soon for your term, our police department has had 124% turnover. We have 31 employees in my tenure that have come and gone, or been added, excuse me, been added to the payroll. This revolving door is not only expensive to take, but it is terrible in trying to manage effectively. Too much time is spent on turnover and training. Leadership is a huge factor. And job satisfaction is tied to leadership. It's not just the wage. But I would implore Mr. Smith and his council to do an analysis, survey of the surrounding communities and what their wage rates are for all levels of force at police department. I know we did that back around three years ago when we did the pay scale, but I think it's time to do it again. If pay is one of those issues, I think we need to fix that. We can't afford in four more years to have another 124% turnover. And I think that's something this council should really manage and watch closely, your turnover rates. It takes a huge toll, doesn't it, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I also wanted to recommend that the city consider developing a full-time position that's strictly for an individual to oversee the evidence when evidence is stolen. I think that deserves a full-time spot. One thing that I asked for back years ago, which I think is important for the community, for transparency, would be to report monthly, the number of arrests, citations, all that stuff. Just, you know, it used to be in the newspaper, how many DUIs, how many this, how many of that. People need to know that you're working. And that's a, that's a good measuring tool to see what's going on out there. How many speeding tickets are you riding? People complain, oh, they're speeding my neighbor. Well, are we really riding tickets? We won't know that unless you give us a report. I know we were getting it quarterly, but it was somewhat cumbersome in the way it was being presented, not good. Request the full support and assistance by the DA and the staff in the evidence collection preservation issue, and I think we're done. That ends my discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Jamie Brudten? Push your button, this guy.
This one?
Yeah, you got it.
I wanted to speak to the rezoning for, at Oakland Park, if I could for just a moment. This is the second time since I've been living on Oakland Park that the effort has been made to rezone this area. It really is something I would just dread. I can't tell you how many times I've seen really big trucks go down that street and then because they couldn't make the corners, slowly back up in front of me, all the way back until they could get a place that they could turn, they couldn't turn really at this corner, couldn't turn at that corner. Some of the truckers were a little more aggressive, and so they did turn and made really, really deep treads, especially if it had rained recently, into like Memorial Baptist and like cornered wherever, you know, they just tried to get around. They just went up into our yards and nobody did anything to say, we're sorry about that. They just sort of went and you went out and saw. And it's noisy, I mean, just having more traffic. I already have somebody living across the street running who is running sort of a quiet auto repair shop, and in that one little lot, he often has nine cars over there. Nine cars in that one lot, just sitting in the lot, all that kind of stuff. We, we don't need more of it. I, I brought into a residential area. I wanted to be quiet. I don't like the sleeper. I want to go to bed and not hear traffic coming and going and zooming and please, leave our zone alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brudten. Next we have Ms. Sharon Hall.
I just, and I may not be allowed to say this, but in my understanding, Kelly is saying that the mayor knew of this discrepancy in 2017.
I did not, sir.
Okay, 2018, 19?
I said as far back as late 18, 19.
Okay, and Alderman here did not know until what other year?
I learned of it in 2021, between January and March.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Out of number seven, referendum, Mr. Coleman?
Yes. I think that it would be who, the city of Livingston, to consider adopting term limits for all who's at this table. And here, actually, what the city of Cookville does, they have a two-term limit. And I would like to say the Sebel of this community have a voice on this issue. And so my question is, how do you go about doing that? What are your first steps? Can you explain that process?
You talking to me?
Yes.
Okay, so you're talking about changing charter? That's what you're talking about, to, to get, change the charter, to change the form of bill? You'd be going, I'm taking it you're willing to go to a, if you want to be identical, you'd be going to a city manager type format opposed to what we currently have?
No, that's not my question.
Okay.
My question, just to clarify, is for us to consider going to a two, for term limits, does that require a charter change as you bring up the charter, which is obviously an issue? Or can it be put on a referendum for the people to, unless they're, I'm not sure what the process is. I would like to begin that conversation.
So for a charter change to happen, the board of Alderman has to approve it in the new build city general assembly to be approved?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So in other words, we, as this body, have to vote to change the charter?
That's correct.
Because our charter says we have unlimited, we can serve unlimited.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so how do we begin that process?
When?
Would I have to call for a discussion, make a recommendation, make a motion? How does that work?
You talk for Alderman and mayor, Mr. Alderman, or what?
All people at the same.
We can put it on the agenda?
Yeah, let's put it on the agenda. Thank you, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Agenda policy?
Yeah, agenda policy. Okay, so just recently, it seems to be an issue of getting something that you want as an Alderman on the agenda. So I reached out to IMTAS and was told that they suggest that the board discuss a process for setting up meeting agendas. And that decision made by the board regarding how agendas are created be set out of a policy so that all members and the public understand the process. In the past, over the beginning, most of my tenure on this council, I would simply request that I be added, maybe add. But at length, that hasn't occurred. So I want to know, I believe, I make a motion that this board begin to adopt, craft, with the help of city attorney, a policy that gives us framework on the setting of the agenda for all the public meetings. That's my motion.
Motion by Alderman Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clough. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
You're talking about a, no, but this, I understand, but I mean, you're talking about developing a, a policy rather than a procedure, but a policy of step A, step B, step C.
Great question. Thank you. What I'm told by Melissa Ashburn, she's a legal advisor with IMTAS, that it's common that municipalities have a policy of procedures for how to set an agenda for a meeting. And I think that it's time for us to look at that. That's basically what I'm asking for. Is that clear?
It is, and, and maybe I should address this to John, Mr. Meadows. Doing something like that ahead of time, is that going to violate the sunshine laws? We have such strict, you know, prohibitions on how we can communicate before the meeting line.
It's not a violation of the Open Meetings Act for some of your requests that I may place on the agenda or discuss scheduling the meeting, and the purpose of the Open Meetings Act is to give governing bodies and boards such as yourself for meeting behind closed doors and making decisions about city business and government operations that are supposed to be open to the public. So, you know, I, I think historically with this board, if, what I've seen, the, the procedure may be the unofficial or procedure has been, if there's anything that's not on the agenda at the beginning of a city meeting, there's always, someone may make a motion to add something to the agenda that's voted on and passes, it's added. I think that's typically the way it's been handled. But I understand some cities do have specific policies for, for how things get on the, on the agenda. You certainly can do that. That's what you're choosing to do.
Yeah, we got a motion, a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Dave, can you remind me what we're about to make?
I'm happy to repeat my motion and answer any questions that you ask. The motion is that we work with the city attorney at IMTAS to develop a policy and procedures that standardizes the framework for establishing agendas for open meetings.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Does anyone need me to clarify further why I'm asking this? Okay, thanks.
All right, we're up to the list.
Alderman Coleman?
Yes.
Alderman Dale?
Yes.
Pastor Mayor Dotson?
Yes.
Alderman Lightford?
Yes.
Alderman Cuthbert?
Yes.
Motion passed. Matthew Galison, the agenda tonight, want to thank everyone for coming out, everyone who's here.
who's standing on, thank you. We're done.